I didn't bring the dad.
Hi.
Okay. All the meeting order. Call roll call, Sherry.
Here.
Vernon.
Here.
Hayden.
Here.
Ben.
Here.
Ty.
Here.
So all five in present. Ty on Zoom. But everybody please stand for the pledge and allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All of the public, public comment will be allowed at the mayor's discretion. This is a exclusive of items requiring a public hearing. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. As a reminder to the public and city council members alike. The city council staff will not engage in dialogue or debate with any speaker pertaining to any comments made. Members of the public wishing to speak must keep their comments germane or relevant to the specific item. Before the council. Please wait to be recognized by the mayor. Remember to state your name and address for the record. If you're online or like to participate, please type your name in the chat. Wait to be recognized before unmuting and speaking. For anybody here that would like to speak on any item, agenda item.
Uh, in that right.
Yeah, i- is, are you wanting to talk about on number one, public hearing?
Uh, the uh.
Yes.
Yes, uh, after, after when we open that and talk back, I'll let you know when you stand up. Thank you. Is there anyone on Zoom, can I be? Okay. Hey, move on, I need a motion to open public hearing.
Mr. Mayor, I'd move to open the public hearing on the advisability of creating the Baser Town Center Tax Increment Financing District.
Have a motion to have a second.
Second.
A motion and a second. Call for roll call, Ty.
Here.
Ben.
Yes.
Oh, hey, hi. Vernon, sorry, Sherry.
Hi.
As a side note. Pete, you want to start us out here?
Sure. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Pete Heaven, your special counsel. Uh, tonight, we're going to have a public hearing about the advisability of creating a tax increment financing district. In the area we commonly call Baser Town Center. Excellent. This is the proposed district. You'll notice that the, the Baser Intermediate School is not included in the district. It's about three hundred and twenty-five acres. And it, uh, in basically runs along a hundred and fifty-fifth street and then to the east from there. Excellent. There's many ways to create a TIF district. The one most appropriate, uh, to us and this property. Is to create or find that it is a conservation area. Under Kansas law, as you'll see, there are three, three requirements to, to qualify for a conservation area. It must be less than fifteen percent of the area of the city. And more than fifty percent of the structures in that area are thirty-five years or older. And the area may become blighted due to two or more of the following factors. Next slide. Dilapidation, obsolescence or deterioration of structures, illegal use of individual structures. Presence of structures below minimum standards, building abandonment, excessive vacancies, overcrowding. And inadequate utilities and infrastructure. So the test is threefold. The first test is the district cannot be more than fifteen percent of the area of the city. The district is three hundred and fifty-one point nine one acres and the city limits are constituted at. Four, about forty-six hundred acres. Simple division and the district is approximately seven point five eight nine percent. So the first test of being less than fifteen percent has been met. The next test is age of structures. There are fifteen structures in the district, three single-family homes and fi- and twelve agricultural outbuildings. All of these structures are over thirty-five years old. I'll very briefly discuss each of the structures. Uh, twenty-six, twenty-five North One Fifty-Fifth Street, uh, was built in nineteen hundred. It's abandoned, it is dilapidated, and it violates numerous city codes. Next slide, there's a picture of the home. And next slide, a representative picture of the interior. The next property, single-family home is twenty-five eleven North Fifth, One Fifty-Fifth. It was built in nineteen thirty-three, it too is abandoned, dilapidated, and also violates numerous city codes. Picture of the home and a representative picture of the interior. The final single-family home is one fifty-four, twenty-five Hickory. It was built in nineteen thirty-three. It too is abandoned, is dilapidated, it's occupied by squatters, not anymore, but it was. And it violates numerous city codes. And the interior. Finally, the farm structures are in the vicinity of one fifty-four, twenty-five Hickory. It's twelve farm structures, mostly barns, lean-to structures, all are abandoned. Uh, all are dilapidated and one building has actually collapsed. We believe they're unsafe, they violate city codes. And all of the buildings, these structures are over thirty-five years. We were unable to get photographs from the ground because it's virtually impossible to get back in there. But here is an aerial of the agricultural structures. That's conclusion based upon what we've just been through is that the proposed district is qualified as a conservation area. Under Kansas law. It comprises less than fifteen percent of the land area of the city. And it includes structures more than fifty percent of which are thirty-five years or older. We believe that the district has not yet been, become blighted, but it may become blighted over time. Due to the combination of inadequate utilities, illegal use, abandonment. And the presence of structures and conditions below minimum code standards and structures that are dilapidated, obsolete, or deteriorated. This is the first step in a series of steps. If the council wishes to create a TIF district. Tonight does not, um, approve any form of improvement. Type of improvement, quality of improvement. That will be done through the typical zoning and planning process. You'll have an opportunity to look at projects as they come. And if you like them, you can approve them. If you don't, you don't have to. But this is the first step in creating that district that will enable you to use. Real estate tax increment for infrastructural improvements. Be happy to stand for any questions.
Anybody have any questions for Pete?
Vernon. I'm listening.
Thanks, Pete.
Thank you.
Sir. I'm gonna open up for public comment.
Yeah. Uh, my name is Ron Ketske and I'm at nine five five two eight Crestwood Drive. Um. Two issues that max, probably a total of three, but first one is all this land in city limits or any of it out of. City limits. And. Any studies done on far as drainage of property if developed?
It, it is all in city.
It is all in.
It is, yes, sir. And, um.
Thank you, that should be it.
Okay. Uh, if, after the meeting, if you want to stick around, we'll talk about, we're not going to get into discussion now about the. It will be done in, you know, once we get to that point, but no, it has not been done at this point.
Okay. Okay, you got.
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
Anybody else would like to talk? We have anybody online? Need a motion to get out of the public hearing?
Mr. Mayor, I move to close the public hearing on the advisability of creating the Baser Town Center Tax Increment Financing District.
Have a motion to have a second.
I'll second.
Have a motion, a second, I'll take a vote. Ben.
Hi.
Hayden.
Hi.
Vernon.
Hi.
Sherry's.
Hi.
Ty.
Hi.
This is five. Move on to resolution number two, uh, twenty twenty-three dash thirty-two.
I'm just a partner here, um, if, if please, as the council, you may want to consider ordinance number eighty-eight.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I'll start off with discussion on that.
Yeah, so one additional question based on the comment that the drainage studies would be done by each individual development. As they, before they would be approved, correct? Okay. Thank you. That's all I had. I, I think we've talked about this some, it's a good way to bring some new development into the city. I think it's a good area to do it and looking forward to progress.
Yeah, and it's area that sat vacant for decades. So yeah, it's time for, time to move forward and it'll be good for the center area of the city also, in my opinion.
Vernon, do you have anything?
I have nothing.
Do you have anything, Ty? Ty?
We're with the others, thank you.
Okay. Okay, so we need a motion to, yeah, need a motion on number eight, eighty-eight.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I would move to approve ordinance number eight, eighty-eight. In ordinance of the governing body of the city of Baser, Kansas, making findings and establishing a redevelopment district pursuant to KSA twelve dash seventeen seventy. At SEC and amendments thereto.
Have a motion to have a second.
I'll second.
A motion, a second, I'll take vote. Vernon.
Hi.
Sherry.
Hi.
Hayden.
Hi.
Ben.
Hi.
Ty.
Hi.
This is five. Now I can go on to twenty-three. We needed a motion for resolution twenty twenty-three dash thirty-two.
And Mayor, as it's acceptable to me, you have Mr. Jeff McPharo here. He was our engineering consultant for Leavenworth County Rachel and her patients, so we have the obligation, um, we go right to.
Good evening, Mayor, uh, members of the council, my pleasure to be back in front of you. It's been a few months since we were last here. And if you believe it or not, the first time that we presented to you, you're the first governing body that we presented to. This time, you're our final governing body, uh, that we're presenting this report to. Want to give a quick summary of what we've been through on this project, uh, because it's been about a year and a maybe, but we're coming to a conclusion that's timely and we'll talk about that here in a moment. Next slide, please. Want to step a quick recap of the project we've gone through, including the levels of impeachment that we've had, uh, with a number of stakeholders in the public. Talk about our list, uh, the consolidated list of projects that we evaluated. The tool we used to prioritize those projects. And then finally, some of those action items, uh, for each of you to consider as different as individual cities in the county here within Leavenworth and together. So our project, if you'll recall, we began kind of on two parts. One, we started to look about at the criteria of how we're going to evaluate projects. We looked at that through the lens, not only of what this community felt was important, but from different agencies that provide funding. Uh, that could be used for transportation permits, whether the US DOT. Uh, the Mid-America Regional Council, the Kansas Department of Transportation. At the same time, we started to take a look at projects that have been identified over the past, well, more than two decades that haven't come to fruition yet. But what do we want us to do and how do we want to look at those projects? And are there other projects that we should consider moving through that process? Today, we're right here at the final, uh, adoption phase and the conclusion of this study. I'll certainly want to hear a few, uh, any questions you might have and be able to answer those. Next slide, please. On the engagement, we had a number of stakeholder meetings, uh, virtually in the fall of twenty twenty-two. And then again, in the spring of twenty twenty-three, or met with people that time in person. Going through different criterias, and this was stakeholders that ranged from economic development mindsets to, um, cities, uh, staff. To different entities throughout the process. We broke it up, uh, geographically as well, so we would focus here in Baser, for instance, uh, and other counties to hear those inputs. We also had two rounds of public meetings. Uh, two meetings were held in late twenty twenty-two that were both, uh, online available. And we also had them in public. We had one here in Baser, uh, and one up in Lansing, so people could come and share their thought. We also did it, uh, online. We have another online round in the spring of twenty twenty-three to present some of our findings, input books. And then finally, those elective official greetings, uh, kind of wrapping that up today. We are meeting with the, uh, Port Authority on a Wednesday and we'll go through the same presentation. Slide. For recall, and we brought this up last time, that we started with, uh, just dozens and dozens of projects that have been looked at throughout the county. Some of which, uh, overlapped, some of which were on new alignments, received a lot of feedback. Which brought us to, at the next slide here. A consolidated project map that really identified forty-three projects for us to evaluate. Uh, some of those projects could be combined, for instance, the interchanges along K seven, uh, that could be upgraded from intersections to full interchange. You could do those individually or as a group. Other projects could be divided. Uh, for instance, one of the projects, uh, that scored very well was a new hundred and fifty-eighth all the way up to twenty straight border. Which creates a parallel to K seven. And ultimately could include that new interchange, uh, with I seventy and the Kansas Turnpike. That total cost for all those projects was in excess of one point five billion dollars. Slide. We spent time last time going through all the different ways we evaluated these projects. We'll go through that again with you this evening, but we talked about traffic operations and safety. Access to amenities, uh, economic development, equity, sustainability, and cost effectiveness. And then as we looked at projects, we wanted to really score those based on how people wait those. What's the public waiting that we heard as we, as we heard him on different meetings? What are the people in the county or the city find that they thought was important? Uh, in that case, what we heard, economic development was actually the biggest criteria that we're looking at. But then we also wanted to take a look at what about the Mid-America Regional Council? Because if we're going to compete for funds with other people in the metro area, we need to understand how the Mid-America Regional Council will look and what their priorities are. The same with Kansas Department of Transportation and the US Department of Transportation. All of which few things a little bit different. I'm saying they're right or wrong, but they just have a different lens in which they look at. Slide. Oh, one too many. Back up a couple here. One more there. The tool we have, and this is still available online for you to take a look at, actually allowed everybody to go in and create their own waiting for what they felt was important. For instance, if you wanted to see, everything else is set up, I'll find out, safety, if I want to go build something with safety, what project would actually score the best on improving safety? You could take a look at that and even still look at that today. We also populated this and gave you some, uh, quick buttons down at the bottom right to look at Mark, to look at KDOT, to look at the US DOT. And how would they do in projects? We also screen it down based on the type of projects. If you want to look, talk about interchanges or major road improvements, you could just focus on those. If you want to take a look at, uh, multimodal trails, what was prioritized there? So those are the things you can look at and see where those positions. Next slide. So with that, we actually came down and, and broke it down in a report and wanted to share with you. Uh, that we looked through the lens of KDOT. What are the projects that really scored the highest? This is timely because here in about a month, KDOT is going to begin their round of local consult, uh, where they're looking to hear input from communities. If recall, one of the things that we talked about was the importance to speak with more than just one voice. Be able to go in front with the different communities here in Leavenworth County, at the county itself. To say, these are our priorities, we've gone through this endeavor and that carries added weight when it's being considered by KDOT. Not just having a lone end. That's also an area in which some of your neighboring counties and communities have historically done better. They've come together with a more of a unified voice to make their case and their projects have scored together. So hopefully, we're getting up there on that equal footing to compete for some of these projects. So those projects include improving K five. Uh, it's scored very well in a number of different categories. The K seven interchanges. A bypass, um, on the western side of Leavenworth. And a west connection, uh, over by West Taganoxie, updating that. And then the Eastern Gateway Project. It's a little asterisk, there's something unique about how this project needs to be approached. Because of all the projects we've talked about, the Eastern Gateway is the one which is the new Missouri River crossing. Would be a major endeavor, uh, likely well over three hundred million dollars, uh, when also none to build. But it's also the farthest, uh, really in terms of getting ready to be built. There's just a lot of additional studies. So with that in mind, what we recommended was that is a project that, uh, you submit to KDOT to ask for them. To help fund part of the match for a RACE grant, which is a US DOT grant that's out there. Next slide. US DOT competitive grants, uh, the RACE program, it comes out every year. They actually allow just for a project like this, a project that is so big, just the cost to study and develop it is burdensome for communities. This is an option that, that we think, uh, could be eligible for that. It does take a lot of cooperation even to apply. So that means not only you all wanting to go after this grant, but having support from Kansas Department of Transportation. And the Missouri Department of Transportation, as well as active support from your congressman and US Senate. These are extremely competitive, so to go forward, it's, it's a big push, um, to, to get there. Again, this is one that if you were to go down this path, they could be great if, if KDOT would make some of their funds that are available for project development or pipeline development to help assist on that. The, oh, not quite yet there, uh, the next area of, uh, grants that are out there, they're called the Safe Streets for All. This will come out here in about a year, that's a project. Uh, there's a couple of different ways. City of Leavenworth and Leavenworth County have been awarded what's called the Development of an Action Plan. It's something you could compete for as well next year as a community, which really puts some safety dollars, uh, to study and identify what some improvements in your community could be made. It's something that in the past, KDOT has also provided matching funds. Uh, eighty percent of its federations provided by the federal government, twenty buck, twenty percent by local. KDOT has actually meant, uh, communities fifty fifty on that match. So if there was a hundred thousand dollars safety study, that bring forward ten thousand, the local communities could bring ten thousand. Actually, in some cases, they'll bring even a little bit more. So something for you to consider as you move forward next year. Once you go through that action plan, you become eligible to compete for actual implementation dollars as well. Uh, to actually build some safety improvements. Next slide, please. When we talk about Mark's programs, and there'll be a call for projects next spring on that, uh, there's some improvements that we think compete well on that. If we take a look at the, uh, service transportation block grants or what used to be called the STP funds. The K five improvements scored well on that, as did the hundred and fifty-eighth and hundred and fifty-fifth street quarters. Uh, with an asterisk that does not include a new interchange with I seven. So I seventy here is owned by the KTA, as you're aware. There was no federal dollars that went into building that segment of I seventy. They can't accept any federal dollars, which is what the Mark funds are flow down of federal dollars. It has to be funded by the Kansas Turnpike or local, uh, partners, uh, not by either KDOT, which includes. Federal funding or Mid-America Regional Council. So keep that in mind as, as you look at that. Uh, parallel street improvements. And then the Taganoxie Eisenhower Quarter improvements, as well as some transit improvements. Next slide, please. The other program that Mark will have, and there'll be a call for projects like this. The other program that Mark will have, and there'll be a call for projects like this, is their Planning to State More Places Program, or PSP Program. And one of the, this idea of a new portal that links, runs parallel to K seven, potentially south, south of the Kansas River, all the way up through Lawrence. This is a great opportunity to actually study and identify a cohesive program to actually build that and put some details, a little bit more than where we're at and we're able to do on this project. And look at how you can support not only a parallel facility K seven, but provide sidewalks and pedestrian access. And think of that as you look at those. The other one is the Kansas River Crossing. We all know what's going on at DeSoto right now, and the interest that came up starting about this time last year to really get better access to DeSoto and the Anasomic Plant. This is an opportunity. That's a program that could be used if someone studied that. I'll tell you, the city of DeSoto got word of this, and it's somewhat interested to have probably a conversation with that. We know there's going to be some planning and discussion going on there. So it's an interesting opportunity there. So in conclusion, we've had an extensive amount of public stakeholder and elective official outreach going through these forty-three different projects. The projects were evaluated based on defined metrics, and we aligned those scoring criteria from the different funding sources, as well as from the outreach we've had. That gives you that opportunity to speak as one voice. Ordinance or resolution in front of you this evening is that next step to do that. So when KDOT's local consult is held on October seventeenth, you can speak as a community, really advocate for yourself much stronger in the pursuit of support. So with that, next slide there. As a conclusion, happy to take any questions you might have for clinicals.
On the safety programs, I don't know really if this is for you for city staff. Is, is there an avenue for some cross, crossing mechanism in either hundred and fifty-fifth or hundred and fifty-eighth and twenty-four forty? Now, that's one thing that was talked about as we build out both of those areas on either side of state, however you want to say it, that'd be good to have some crossing option.
So that would have to be studied and evaluated. Pedestrian crossings and how we can accommodate that. That's what you're talking about.
Yeah, correct.
Those, KDOT does have some safety funds if they see the need for that. Being a relatively high-speed route, there's going to be some pretty good scrutiny on that.
Right.
Make sure that can be designed and build, create additional safety hazards as they go.
Thank you.
Does anybody else have any questions?
Well, I just got a couple of comments. First and foremost, thanks, Greg, for spearheading this. This was a lot of work. I have the fortunate opportunity to be on the Port Authority board with Greg as he began to put this together. That's tremendous work. I really appreciate that. Now, I am the outgoing chair of the STP, our, our Mark Transportation for Kansas. And with some of the work that Greg has been bringing up, and as well as, as our outstanding Commissioner Doug Smith, we at Mark have been looking at trying to get as many dollars as we can, you know, into the Baser area. Baser area first, because that's what I represent on the Mark wars, right? I mean, on the, on the transportation, but then Lebanon County at large. So many a times, Greg, we hear me say, hey, how can I help? How can I help? You, you had a slide, and I want to go back to that, go back one slide, I think. Yes. The community can now speak with one voice, and that's so important. People from Mark will hear me talk about the entire Lebanon County. People in Mark will hear our county commissioner talk about the entire county. Those things are important, because as we begin to have those conversations, you know, with, with Mark and others, they hear that. And it took those maybe ten years to kind of get to that point to where now it's kind of like an EF Hutton thing, you know, Lebanon County's talking, people are actually listening. You know, that's a lot of that has to do with, outstanding work that Greg did putting this together. Yeah, outstanding work of our county commissioner, and then I was fortunate to be the chair. So, so I'm going to continue to do the work that I've been doing.
I want you to keep in mind that this is just that beginning step for you. Now it's putting these in action. That's important, and I will say that had the pleasure of working with staff from the different communities through this process, they're engaged with each other, partnering with each other. And I think they've, they've really been, Leslie and others have been just tremendous to model just what you're saying. Let's figure out how to speak with one voice, even though it's advocating for a project that doesn't affect your specific community immediately, like Taganoxie and K five. You certainly see that immediate connection there, much important for the community. And doesn't mean that the next round of funding, there's not a project that makes more sense for enough.
Chair.
I do.
Ben.
No.
Thank you. I appreciate the presentation. This is very informative. I learned something today. I didn't realize the intersection at a hundred and fifty-eighth and I seventy wasn't going to go through KDOT, that that would actually be directly through the turnpike. So if there was ever going to be an interchange right there, that wouldn't go through KDOT.
Right. They do partner together quite a bit, but that is, that would be a Kansas Turnpike project.
Very good. Thank you.
Richard.
Thanks, sir. Any more discussion amongst ourselves here and everything?
No.
I need a motion for resolution twenty twenty-three dash thirty-two.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve resolution twenty twenty-three dash thirty-two, a resolution accepting the priorities for progress progress regional transportation capital improvements plan conducted jointly by the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Lebanon County, in the cities of Baser, Lansing, Lebanon, and Taganoxie, Kansas.
I have a motion to have a second.
I'll second.
A motion and a second. I'll call for a vote. Vernon, I, Aiden.
Hi.
Cherry.
Hi.
Ben.
Hi.
Ty.
Hi.
Yes, I vote. Moving on to item number three.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Matty Waldak, Deputy City Administrator, included in your packet for consideration tonight is an agreement for trails, trail connectivity at the Civic Campus between the Baser Community Library and the City of Baser. And Kathy, if we could go to page two twenty-six with the exhibit, that would be great. This shows the plan, I believe. Yep. We can scroll down. So this is, of course, the site of the Civic Campus, and as you can see, we get closer to the new city hall. This agreement would authorize the city to construct that trail connection in between the Baser Community Library and the new city hall. It's incredibly important to the city that this campus feel like a very cohesive space. And so making sure that these centers are connected so that folks can walk from one public space to the next is very important. And so the agreement that's included in your packet for consideration says that the city would pay for these improvements to be constructed. And then, once they are constructed, the Baser Community Library would assume maintenance responsibility of that portion that's on their property moving forward. One of the conditions that we're asking from the community library is that the public be allowed access to this at all times, so that it's not, you know, the, the library section and then the city section. It's the public section to walk through and connect from, from center to center. We have sent this to the Baser Community Library for comment. We have not received any feedback as of yet, but we have had preliminary discussions that have been positive. So the agreement in your packet, I'm sorry, the resolution in your packet would authorize the city administrator to authorize that agreement if and when we received an executed agreement back from the Baser Community Library. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Anybody have any questions for Matty?
I just, yeah, just comment. I like the connectivity. I know there were some questions about it and concerns about who's going to own what piece, so happy if we can get somewhere on it.
Anybody else?
Matty, this is Ty. I heard you mention the community library has had some positive communications, and we heard from the schools.
Yes, sir. The next action item will be the agreement with the schools, and if it's okay with you, I'll provide an update at that action item.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
So I need a motion for item number three, agreement for trail connectivity at the Civic Campus between the Baser Community Library and the City of Baser.
Mr. Mayor, this is Sherry, and I would move to authorize the city administrator to execute the agreement for trail connectivity at the Civic Campus between the Baser Community Library and the City of Baser.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second. Call for a vote. Ben.
Hi.
Ty.
Hi.
Aiden.
Hi.
Vernon. Uh, Sharon.
Hi.
That's his five oh. Now we'll move on to item number four, Matty.
Thank you, Mayor. Included in your packet for consideration is the agreement that we just mentioned between the City of Baser and the Baser Lindwood School District, calling for two connections from the Civic Campus facility to the Early Learning Center and Greyhawk Elementary. We were, we presented to the school board Monday night, and thank you to Council President Sims and Council Member Stanford for attending and support of our presentations. We were there to present on a couple of different items, including the trail connectivity. So again, the same premise, which is the city would construct the connections that are shown on the screen. And then, once the construction is completed, the school district would assume maintenance responsibility for those trail connections once complete. We did receive feedback from one of the board members that they were concerned about the maintenance responsibility going forward, but we did not receive any additional feedback from the school board other than that comment. They did not take any action during that evening. It was just for an introduction. We're not sure if it's going to be placed on a future agenda for their consideration. But that encapsulates the feedback that we received in the public meeting, and again, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any, any questions for Matty?
And this is Ty. I will be quite clear for the school that if they are concerned with the maintenance considerations of these properties, I am fully aligned with not pursuing those, not connecting the schools with the rest of our community paths. Just so they know my position.
Thank you, Councilmember Grover.
Anybody want to say anything? And that's basically in line with the agreement, right? If they don't agree to the maintenance, then we wouldn't pursue the construction.
That is correct. The rest, the agreement that's included would authorize the city administrator to execute the agreement if and when the school district signed and agreed to the terms that are included.
Majority of those trails that look like for the school district go on the early childhood development property.
That's correct.
Where did that property come from?
I believe it was purchased from the city.
Oh.
Donated.
Donated. My apologies. Thank you, Council President Simms.
Do you think this is something that they'll talk about as a board, like in a meeting coming up in October, or?
We will, we plan to follow up with the superintendent. It was our understanding, and you know, I will take responsibility for that. We were anticipating action at the meeting, and we weren't aware that we were placed as a, as a introduction item as opposed to an action item. So we'll follow up with the school superintendent as to if and when that will be placed on a future agenda, but they did not take action during our presentation.
The, the only comment I would have is, you know, if maybe this would be an item, of course, if the council would want to maybe move this to like October eleventh council meeting and allow the school board time to, to, you know, either learn more, ask more, or to vote. It's just a comment.
I think I'm open with conditional approval, right? And then if they have different terms that they want to bring back, that would come back before us.
Yes, if, if the school district has additional comments or questions, or if they make a final decision, we will certainly provide an update to this governing body.
And the other thing that made me think about is the timing of the construction in general, is there a kind of deadline? We would not, we'd lose some of those benefits of building those trails along with the rest of the connectivity.
Yes, we need a decision sooner rather than later. And so we're working on actively bids for, for construction of the park amenities and so. But I don't think delaying it to October eleventh would be adverse to that schedule. So I think if, if that's the direction of the council, I don't think it would have a negative impact.
I would just add one comment to your question, Councilmember Maples. So the city is actively negotiating pricing with Crossland Construction, and that includes potential construction of these sidewalk connections to the Civic Campus Trail amenities, because these are not sidewalk connections that could be constructed as part of our KDOT trail. And so if the city intends to utilize money to construct these facilities, it needs to be decided now. I mean, certainly, it is the governing body's choice if you would want to pay to construct them later, but I would anticipate you would be spending more money for mobilization that would otherwise be unnecessary.
Okay.
And that would not be staff's recommendation to you.
I don't feel like there was a lot of open opposition to this within the school district. I think there was maybe one comment outside of that. I don't feel like there was a lot of negativity there.
Correct. The only feedback that we received was from one board member, and it was concern about the, the maintenance responsibility moving forward. But we did not receive feedback, positive or negative, from the rest of the school board members.
To be abundantly clear, this is Ty. If they're not willing, I will cut these off at our property lines and vote to not connect these properties to their property. And if there's any hesitation in what I just said, please just ask.
So I need a consensus where, how you guys want to do it. You want to move it to October eleventh, or you want to vote on it tonight?
I'm fine with voting on it tonight.
Yeah, I think conditional approval is good.
I'm fine.
Okay. All right. Item number four, agreement for trails connectivity of the Civic Campus between Baser Lindwood School District and the City of Baser. I need a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to authorize the city administrator to execute the agreement for the trail connectivity at the Civic Campus between Baser and Lindwood School District and the City of Baser.
I have a motion to have a second.
This is Ty. I will second.
I got it.
I'll shoot it a second. I'll call for a vote. Ben.
Hi.
Aiden.
Hi.
Vernon.
Hi.
Ty.
Hi.
Sharon.
Hi.
That's his five oh. Moving on to item ordinance number eight eight nine.
Evening, Mayor.
Councilmembers.
This item before you all is really asking for an amendment to the Baser traffic schedule. As you all know, the traffic schedule is really introduced or outlined in our city code, and it designates special traffic controls, things like crosswalks, speed limits, snow routes, et cetera. And the reason for this amendment is that an additional crosswalk has been added near the VFW. The precise location is about fifty feet north of the intersection of one hundred fifty-fifth Street and Maple Street. And it will include a flashing signal push button. The city plans to install the flashing beacon and signage for the crosswalk. And that crosswalk is new. It was finished being constructed just a few weeks ago this summer, and it was made to accommodate pedestrian traffic near the VFW. I'm happy to answer any questions if there are any.
Any questions for Maria?
I just think I have a comment that I think it's a great, because when I've attended the VFW, it can be dangerous walking across there, especially in the evening. So I think this was a great idea for the citizens and the VFW individuals, so I'm glad we're doing it.
Yeah, I think it's a good addition. Just administratively, is there a way to not have to bring a minor change in front of the council, or is that based on our?
I actually anticipated that question, and I think the answer is yes. That you, in perhaps another resolution, could give authority to the city administrator to just administratively update the traffic schedule to reflect certain traffic. I, I can study this more and, you know, bring something back to the council, but it wouldn't be just approval here in a meeting. We'd either have an ordinance or a resolution.
Sure. Yeah, I think that'd be worth.
Yeah, I think let's do that whenever you're ready to present, just put it down so we can go on it.
Okay.
Need a motion for eight eight nine?
Mr. Mayor, I move we adopt ordinance eight eight nine, amending the city to Baser's traffic schedule to include the additional crosswalk near the intersection of one hundred and fifty-fifth Street and Maple Street.
I have a motion to have a second.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. I'll call for a vote. I have motion, a second, I'll call for a vote. Sharon.
Hi.
Vernon.
Uh, Hayden.
Hi.
Ben.
Hi.
Ty.
Hi.
That's his five oh. Is there a need, need for executive session? No need for executive session. I need a motion to adjourn the regular meeting.
Mr. Mayor, I move we adjourn the regular meeting.
Motion down second.
Well, second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'm gonna call for a ten minute recess before this and the uh, work session. Six fifty-five. I'll need to open it up again to open up the work session, right? I don't think we have a paper. Okay. Back from recess, we're gonna go into the work session for tonight. Item number one, desig- making the city's website is the official news, city newspaper.
Good evening, Mayor and Council again. I'm Maria Garcia. Um, this item is before you all tonight on work session to really gauge interest in whether to establish the city's. Website as the quote-unquote official city newspaper, as is um, stated in state statute. Um, as background, there is a state law that requires cities of the third class and really all cities. In Kansas to designate an official city newspaper for publication purposes, and it has a lot of really specific requirements about what that newspaper. Is supposed to look like, how often it gets published, um, that its general circulation, et cetera. Um, in twenty seventeen, the City of Baser designated two different newspapers as the official city newspaper. The Tonganoxie Mirror and then the Leavenworth Times. And um, Tonganoxie Mirror publishes once a week on Wednesdays, and the Leavenworth Time publishes Tuesday through Saturday. Um, and those kind of have fluctuated over the years. Um, and you know, the deadlines for submitting things to the newspapers have kind of changed over the years as well. Um, and staff has to, you know, stay in tune with those things so that we can get things published on time. Um, the state law is not uniformly applicable to all cities in Kansas. The statutes are different for cities of the first class and second and third. And so that means that cities can and do charter out of this particular statute. Um, and make rules for their official city newspapers and designate it, designate their city websites. As the official city newspaper for publication purposes. Doing that does not allow publication of everything that comes before the city council for approval. There are. A limited number of statutes that are very specific in state law that say. This particular budget hearing, for example, or the appraisers hearing for an eminent domain proceeding. Has to be published in a newspaper of general circulation. The statute says either um, daily or weekly publication. And so we know that's very specific, but there are a number of other statutes, for example, general ordinance publication. Um, like, for example, you all approved ordinance eight eight nine, um, amending the traffic schedule tonight. That statute says that that only needs to be published in the official city newspaper. And so that's what we're talking about is those general statutes. So that could be just posted on our city website, and that would count towards um, proper publication under the law. There are a number of cities that have um, really talked about this and pursued it in recent years. Um, smaller cities such as Lake Quivera, Mound Ridge, Andover, Hillsborough, McPherson, and then, you know, large cities like Wichita. Um, Topeka is interested in looking at that question as well as um, Dodge City is a city of the first class that has chartered out of it as well. So. You know, catching the attention of other cities and staff thought this is, you know, worth mentioning to the council. Um, it's a. You know, potential cost-saving change, um, but really the, the bigger issue is convenience of newspapers. Changes in how often they publish that kind of, you know. Um, is challenging for our purposes internally of when we need to publish something, and then also really. Very importantly, convenience for the public. Not everyone subscribes to the newspaper, or maybe has access to see when notices are published, and they could um, perhaps more easily do that when they log on to the city's website. So this is not an action item for you all. It's really just for discussion, whether there's interest, if there is, and staff is directed to return with this. Item, it would likely look like a charter ordinance, first of all, and then an accompanying resolution that would um, declare the city's website as the official city newspaper.
I personally think that'd be best way to go, a great thing to do. Um, does, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Yeah, I, I appreciate both the efficiency and cost savings of that, so I think it's great.
Vernon? Well, I struggle with the internet. I mean, I, I struggle with it. I think I even had to, uh, the city loaned me some equipment. For me to be able to log into the internet, because mine at, at the home wasn't working well, so. So that's always a major concern. Not just a concern for me, but the folks that do not have. Internet, I mean, not everyone, you know, has that, so how would they know? And you mentioned about logging in. I've never logged into the city. Web, web, webpage, never been on the city's Facebook page. You know, some of us are just dinosaurs, I guess you can say. You know, and still need to read that. Read that piece of paper or other sources. So my question becomes, how do we deal, how do we address people that do not have internet co- connectivity? Cause we still got some rural areas here. I think uh, I think my good friend out there has Hughes Net, because, because internet's not out in, in this, in this area. You know, and we're talking about. Area that's born in Baser. Um, so those are just some of my concerns about it.
Okay, if I um, first of all, if I said login, I didn't mean.
Okay.
Login with the password. I should have said maybe hop on the internet, maybe not log on. But yes, of course, the city website is accessible to anyone who has the internet. There's not a login that's required for that. But um, on the question of people who don't have internet, I mean, that is something I think we would talk about internally, maybe. Um, see what other cities do and how they handle it. I was thinking maybe. We could have um, you know, people contact City Hall who don't have the internet, who are interested in seeing what ordinances get adopted. Um, and so they could either come to City Hall, to the City Clerk's Office to view um, the activity from the city council, or, you know, we could talk about. Um, providing them copies with it. Well, you know, upon request, so we'll, we'll, we'll chat about that more. And then if this item returns to the council, I'll have maybe a more clear answer about how other cities handle that.
Well, those are my concerns.
Okay.
I think to a certain extent, you're also talking about bringing our city up to the twenty-first century as well. I mean, you know. I, I see Vernon's point for sure that there are individuals that struggle with the internet, that don't know how to get onto our website. But I would also simply state. I would like to see the percentage of individuals within Baser City limits that get the newspaper compared to have access to the internet a- as well. So if you're talking about reaching the masses and the majority, I would think that the majority really would more lie on the. What, the side of being able to have access to the website than they would. I don't personally have a newspaper, but I guess I have the ability to get it, right?
And tha- and that's, that's a good point. But we're looking at some, some, some of us are on fixed incomes. Fixed incomes as well, and that might, you know, we have to, in order to do business or to understand where the city is at and what the city is doing. Uh, that's an added expense to those that don't have the internet, so. I, 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 I think, which is said city attorney is, is really important that we need to make sure we provide a secondary avenue. You know, for people to be able to get the information.
Yeah, it's, it's a great comment, Vernon. I'm thinking a couple of different. Possibilities that come to mind with the, the newsletter circulation, if there can be a specific like.
Mm-hmm.
List of ordinances that were passed, or think, basically anything that was posted solely on the internet as that source of publication that has a list and. Maybe just the title, or at least some brief overview so people know to come to city and ask about that information. Does the new city hall have like a public bulletin board type space where those could be included?
Say bulletin board?
We, we do.
Do you mean like a screen that's digital?
Yeah, that, that's correct. Council President Sims, you, you hit the nail on the head. Uh, in the new city hall, we do have an electronic platform uh, with an opportunity for. Uh, postings and things like that. In addition, uh, we also have the opportunity for folks to sign up for text notifications and email notifications. So it may be a simple solution of somebody calling City Hall. We could certainly walk them through that process so they could get a text notification. If something is published, and if they don't have the means to uh, go online and look at that for themselves, we'd be happy to coordinate uh, getting a printed copy to them.
I do appreciate all the outstanding suggestions. There are still those dinosaurs like me who don't know how to text. It's not been, don't, don't text, don't squat or X or whatever, don't do that. So I'm just, as long as we don't close out or exclude somebody, because this is a great idea, the movement in that direction. But we need to have that. You guys hear me say this in the past, Plan B.
Yes, we appreciate that.
One other. I, I, I know we're pretty good partners with the libraries. We talked about this, if there's a way that either have that. That the city website as a bookmark or something on the computers there. When people, if people use that as their internet access, another way they could get to it.
Great suggestion.
Can you move discussion on that, on this? Everybody done? Thanks, Matty. Thanks, Manny. Appreciate it. I I'm moving on. Item number two, update to the city council, November and December meeting schedule.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, Kathy Rann, City Clerk. Tonight, staff is just looking for the city council's feedback and consideration of. Of canceling the November and December fourth Wednesday meetings. Typically in the past, we've moved up those meetings. To where they would accommodate the holiday schedules for staff and city council. So tonight, we're just, this is not an action item. We're just looking for the governing bodies of feedback on your consideration of. Canceling those, that fourth. Wednesday meeting. For the months of November and December and just holding your regular meeting. Like since we now have the works or the regular meetings before the work session twice a month. Just canceling that second meeting.
Consent agenda.
Yeah, I think.
We would bring that back for formal action at at your next meeting if that is. The census of consensus for the governing body.
I think it makes sense and as long as we can always have a special meeting if we have something pop up and we'd have to adjust that for the third week anyway, right?
So we're looking at appointing new council members when?
So according to the resolution that you passed, it would be that first meeting in December.
So it doesn't impact that.
So it should not impact that. We we thought we took that into consideration and I'm glad you brought it up, Councilmember Fields. Thank you.
So that give you what, like four week gaps? Does does that? Cause any challenges to to get city business done?
Great question, Councilmember Stanford. So one of the things that we, you'll recall that this governing body took action on was the. Budget amendment. We typically do that in December and since we did the twenty twenty three budget amendment as part of your regular. Budget package, we don't anticipate any items that would. Would require a special meeting.
Okay.
It will require us to be more proactive in our communication on, oh my goodness, retail liquor licenses. And so they will need to make sure that they are timely in their responsiveness and we will need to. Communicate with them that it's going to be slim pickings finding. A full governing body the week of the holiday.
Yeah, because because I that historically some of us come in last minute.
Yes. And it's it and it's we we try to be very proactive in our communication to remind them of all of the items that are required in order to have their. Liquor license renewed.
Yeah, that's a great point. I was thinking about is it is it worth waiting until we're closer to cancel it? But that lets us be proactive on that communication. So. I think it makes sense.
I think if you're comfortable cancelling. We could put this on consent agenda and as we get closer, if there's a need for a special meeting in December, we could certainly call one at that time. That's really the only instance where I could, it would be an emergency is. I say a need, I won't say an emergency, a need is potentially for liquor license renewal.
December is probably a need.
You know, incorrect wording on my part, sorry. They think it's a need and it's an emergency for them.
You're right.
Stopping sales on December thirty first is mutually a problem.
Yeah, I don't have any problem with that.
Any other questions? Need a motion to adjourn the work session.
Mr. Mayor, I move readjourn the work session.
A motion to second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Thank you, everyone.